Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. It's my privilege to officially call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And would effectively, we do have a quorum. We'll go through the air of officiality by calling a roll call. I'd invite our city clerk to engage in that for us.
Mayor Smith.
Present.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Mark Fenison. He actually called in and needed to be excused tonight.
Yes.
Joe Schei.
Present.
Kevin Flynn.
Present.
And Justin Olson.
Present.
Excellent. As noted, we do have a quorum. We'll proceed therefore with our next agenda item, which is the official prayer which we would offer prior to the commencement of this city council meeting. I would invite Kevin Flynn, who's volunteered to offer that, and we'd ask you to join with him in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we ask that you come before us tonight and just help guide us. Give us the wisdom to deal with the issues that we face. Give us the knowledge to do it correctly. And Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting and bless all our thoughts. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn. And we'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance. We'd invite all to please arise. Mr. Wilson, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll proceed with the next agenda item, which is the mayor's report. There were a few items in the council that I thought were noteworthy. First, I wanted to update you on the backhoe repair project, which our previous public works employee had indicated that he would strive to complete. And so I think as of last two weeks, we're still in the completion process. We've got the parts ordered and did it get sent to the repair?
It's still at the machine shop and we haven't got it back yet.
We've sent it to the machine shop so that the necessary valve work could be done properly, but we haven't got it back yet, so obviously that's.
I have a question. I don't believe it's a backhoe. That's the excavator.
Excavator. It'd be a better definition. Thank you for that, Clarence.
Scratch that.
Yeah, scratch the backhoe.
Echo, excavator.
That's my bet. Okay. Shows my lack of expertise and the heavy equipment we've got. Item number two, update on the 2015 budget process calendar. Just wanted to call to your attention this chart that you have received. We went over carefully this afternoon and polished it up. I'm confident that if we were to follow the dates outlined, that we would have a completed budget by December 11th. So hopefully, we can make that happen. If you have any questions about it, don't hesitate to contact myself or our city clerk.
Mayor?
Yes. I was gonna.
Yeah, okay.
The first significant date that you ought to be aware of is October 9th.
Twenty-third. Twenty-third, remember? On your copy, it was wrong and we corrected it.
Okay. I was, my first important date is when, that is correct. Yes, I was gonna say the 9th. But you'll be receiving, we'll hold a public hearing on the revenue sources on the 23rd. But you'll receive the proposed budget. Wait a second. No, we didn't change the date.
No. Do you want me to? Is it, I can explain that if you want.
Let me try.
Okay.
Because in our meeting today, for me, the first important date is October 6th.
Yes.
That's when you would receive the mayor's estimate for revenues and preliminary proposed budget.
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. So after that, we'll hold a public hearing on the 23rd so that the public could see the figures that you're dealing with. Aside from that, we would proceed through December 11th. Okay? Yeah, Clarence? Thank you.
We're still on one. We have those two meetings. We have two city council meetings that are on holidays. One is on Thanksgiving and one is on Christmas Day. And in order to complete the budget, I'm assuming we're not gonna hold the meetings on those days and that council would like to either move them or cancel them. And here I have proposed, you'll see at the very top, some date options. And as the mayor and I discussed it, we circled the two options that we felt were probably the most appropriate, but for council to look at and approve and see if you feel okay about that. And that is moving the Thanksgiving Day meeting to the following Thursday, which would be December 4th. And so then we would have a meeting on December 4th and then also the regularly scheduled meeting on December 11th. And if we stick to our schedule and we are able to get everything done like we hope, then we anticipate the Christmas Day meeting, maybe just being able to cancel that one. So that, if council is okay with that plan, then the items that were listed on November 27th would now be moved to December 4th.
Okay.
And then hopefully cancelling the 25th if everything goes smoothly. If for some reason we run into a snag in the 11th, we are not able to, we can hold another meeting anytime between then and the end of the month. We just have to get our budget completed by the end of the month. It's preferred to get it done there at the beginning, but if we can't, if something comes up and we can't, it's not the end of the world as long as we get it done before the end of the month.
Can I ask two questions?
Sure.
We have two things that are coming up. One, the police negotiations. And the other one just slipped out, so we'll just deal with one.
Okay.
They, I know we're not gonna have anything to do with police until after the election. So that's gonna cram us for the month.
Well, not necessarily. I did talk to Officer Snaza, or Deputy Snaza. In any event, he is planning on coming down either, and I don't remember now, I'll have to look, either on the 9th or the 23rd of October. I'm thinking it's the 23rd. I'm not 100% positive on that. Coming down to talk to you guys about what to do and that we may need more time into the first of the year before we can make any big change decisions. So there's a possibility we may just be keeping things the same as far as he's concerned.
Well, that'll affect our budget, though.
Right. But that's what we can discuss on that time when he comes.
Okay.
And so he's planning on coming to one of those meetings in October so we can discuss that at the beginning of the budget process.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Mr. Wilson?
I think then you should revise it prior to the next council.
Certainly. Certainly, I'll give you a final, because this says draft at the top just because.
I understand.
Yeah. I'll give you a final one, but I wanted to get your guys' okay before just changing it, so.
I like the turkey.
You like the turkey.
A festive turkey. Now, we need to express our appreciation to our city clerk because this has taken considerable time and energy to kind of plot this out. And it's all set in motion by state law where on October 1st, I'm to receive a proposed preliminary budget. So we're adhering to the guidelines set forth. I'm confident that as we've done in the past, that we'll have a budget for you that will be comfortable and give you something to talk about. Okay? With that, then.
So we kind of made the decision on whether it's okay to move that meeting and then?
We could not do that at a subsequent council meeting when they've had a chance. I know I've got one calendar.
Well, I can't finalize the calendar until we know what those dates are going to be. Is there, do they, is there something else that we?
Fine, ma'am. You're okay to approve the dates as specified? That is its plan? Yep, perhaps then in spirit of responsiveness, the council like to submit a motion relating to the dates of the proposed budget schedule.
I'll put a motion on the table to approve the changes to the schedule as noted.
Okay. You've heard the motion submitted to you by Mr. Flynn to approve the draft budget schedule with the changes as noted.
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Is there any other feedback? I know, Mr. Schei, you just noted that you'd be unavailable on one of those dates.
Yep.
Any other comments? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. So we'll proceed.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who seconded that.
Mr. Wilson. So the last item I had, I seconded that, is that I wanted to report to the council that thanks to the good efforts of our park board, we've officially ordered the four barbecues for, or five. High-quality, I think, barbecues for installation in Warden Park. And we anticipate they will arrive within 10 days or so. And that will be yet another positive little addition to our park properties. So we thank the park board for that. Last but not least, I thought that it might be appropriate to mention at the outset of this meeting that I see that we have a number of individuals who are interested in the marijuana issue. And I think that based on a news article that came out that there's a perception that the council is going to make a decision on the permanent status of our current ban on it. And that is an inaccurate perception, but because tonight, what they're going to be doing is evaluating the feedback that was received during the last public hearing. And as they do that, the findings of fact that will emerge from tonight's discussion will be presented to the planning committee, which is advice and counsel given to us by our city attorney, Earl Morris.
That's not correct.
So, pardon?
That's not correct.
Okay. I thought I had captured it.
Almost.
I'll clarify it for a moment.
What they will be voting on tonight is to adopt the findings of fact, which were all the comments that were made.
Yes.
Adopt them by ordinance with the temporary ban that they made and decide whether they're going to continue with the temporary ban as approved previously in July or whether they want to make a change to that.
Yep.
So this is all regarding the six-month temporary ban that was done in July.
So there will actually be a decision as to the statements of fact and whether or not from those statements of fact, we'll continue with the current pre-existing ban.
Right.
Thank you for that, Clarence.
The only other thing regarding marijuana that will be discussed is the council's work plan to get to the final decision of that. So that will be the only other topic of discussion on marijuana.
Perfect. And so if there was a sense that we were going to decide that the ban that's currently in place is permanent, that's not going to happen today. Because all of this needs to be conveyed to a planning committee, which we formulated within our city. And the planning committee will review the information that is conveyed to them and will make a recommendation back to the council. Does that make sense? And at that point in time, the council will make a permanent decision as to the status of marijuana in the Vader City limits. I hope that clarifies. And so this is complicated, but all of this is being, as I mentioned, I think I got accurate, the fact that our city attorney is guiding us through the legalities and combining where we're at with the ordinances, the temporary ban and state law. So we're doing the best we can to ensure that we're operating within laws as we currently know and understand it in the state of Washington. So if that changes your interest in remaining to participate, fine. You're welcome. We welcome your presence here. But otherwise, you can adopt or adapt and improvise as the spirit guides you. So with that, that concludes my input and the mayor's report. If there are questions, comments, all right, then let's proceed with the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the official agenda. And I would note that we need to add one additional item under new business, which would, I'd invite council action on some grant, a potential grant package relating to the acquisition of communication equipment with funds that Lewis County is making available to small cities. And so there's a deadline on applications, which I think is at the 30th end of this month. And so we need to get council approval to pursue those grant funds. So I would suggest that we add that under new business, item two, at the end of the agenda. So aside from that, I don't have any other changes. Are there any additions on part of other council representatives? Okay? Then I would invite a motion to capture the essence of.
I'd put a motion up that we approve the agenda meeting for 9/25/2014 with the change under new business for potential grant package with Lewis County fund.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has submitted that motion as noted. Do we have a second for it?
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now we will proceed with the approval of the minutes for the three previous meetings that have been held. So we'll await council action.
I'll make a motion to approve the corrected minutes for July 24th, 2014. Also, the public hearing for September 10th, 2014, and our city council meeting for September 11th, 2014.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve those minutes as written, as noted. We have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Now vouchers approvals. You've noted the information on the agenda. We'll await council action.
Make a motion to approve the corrected first half of September 2014 in the amount of $37,348.63 for a end of September 2014, $9,322.49 for a total for September of 2014 of a total of $46,671.12.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve those vouchers as noted. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We're at the special record phase of our city council meeting. We're pleased to note that our first guest is Tammy McCrandle, a legal advocate with Human Response Network. She would like to introduce the topic to council's public attention.
Thank me. I'm not a good public speaker, so forgive me. I just want to introduce myself. I'm Tammy. I'm from Human Response Network. I'm their legal domestic violence and sexual assault advocate. And we deal with the domestic violence shelter for women and children and all sexual abuse and domestic violence. I'm here to do the proclamation.
Fantastic. Yes, we've received a proclamation in support of the cause that she's just articulated. And I would propose that the council consider, this would be our second proclamation in the city of Vader, where we would support efforts to raise awareness of domestic violence within our community and Lewis County as a whole. And I have a copy of that proclamation, which I would be proud to read if the council were willing to approve adopting that.
Yes.
Okay? Would we have it in the form of a motion?
I'll put a motion that we approve this as domestic violence five months awareness month.
The proclamation.
Yeah, the proclamation, yes.
Okay. You've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve this proclamation for the cause so specified. Do we have a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. Well, with that, it'd be my pleasure to make this matter public record, a reading of this proclamation to the public. A proclamation of the city of Vader, Washington. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that domestic violence is widespread and impacts every community member of the city of Vader, Washington. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. And whereas the problem of domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, but crosses all economic, racial, gender, educational, religious, and societal barriers and is sustained by societal indifferences. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about domestic violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions, victims should have help to find the compassion, comfort, and healing they need. And domestic abusers should be punished to the full extent of the law. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing domestic violence in Lewis County through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. And whereas Human Response Network is a recognized accredited service provider for domestic violence advocacy services for the citizens of Lewis County. Now therefore, I, Kenneth Smith, mayor of the city of Vader, Washington, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Vader. We ask the community members to recognize the serious impact of domestic violence and to support victims and embrace the significant role each of us can play in the prevention of domestic violence. Signed, sealed, and dated this 25th day of September 2014. And it would be my privilege to affix my signature to this proclamation with the support and involvement of the city council of Vader. So I thank you for your support of this.
They haven't voted yet.
Oh, man. I almost forgets it. Thank goodness we've got such a high-paid city clerk. Having read the, all in favor of me signing this document, I almost overdid.
Say aye.
Indicated by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you as individuals and in the community for supporting us and the work that we do. We see some really traumatic stuff and I just want to say thank you to all of you for your wonderful support and your love.
Thank you. I will convey this to you.
Thank you. All right. See you guys later. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Next, I would inform the council that we were anticipating a report from Mr. Rich Underdahl, the fire chief for the Lewis Pellets Fire District Number 20, to provide us an update on the emergency medical services being provided to us and residents of Vader and to the residents of Riderwood. However, I received a call earlier this afternoon from Mr. Underdahl, who explained with considerable chagrin that he was unaware of the fact that his emergency medical technician, EMT training, was starting this week and classes are Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. And so, and they go well into the evening. So I asked him if he could be present, what would he have informed the council of? And I, he invited me to speak succinctly and briefly in his behalf. And so if the council would defer to me serving as a replacement, I would inform you what he would have you know as to the current status of issues relating to our emergency medical services and fire coverage for the city of Vader. He said, inform me that I could convey to the council that the inter-local board, which makes decisions relating to the three fire districts pertaining to the southwest Lewis County, Fire District 20, 15, and 7 or 10, met last week and they covered a number of the issues, which I think you're aware of, which they predicted would be a shortage of personnel to staff the position. And their, the shortage of funding, which would have been required of this fire district to ensure the continued coverage with the inter-local entity that maintains our services out of this residence on the corner of South Military and 508. So Mr. Underdahl and other commissioners from our fire district were at that meeting and they resolved the differences and informed them that they are now going to convey the monies that this inter-local board was requiring of Fire District 20. And that the conveyance of those funds was going to be contingent upon getting a financial breakdown as to where the money was going to be utilized. And it took considerable, apparently, conversation, dialogue between the entities present to accept that agreement, but it was accomplished. So our fire district is in the process of conveying that funding to the board. And they will provide a breakdown of where the money's going to be spent. And I could go into detail, but it, I think, would be probably inaccurate in the long term. So that is no longer going to be an issue preventing services for us. The other issue was a shortage of personnel that was looming on the horizon. He responded to that by reporting that he has taken EMT training and will be qualified for that, so that will fill in one slot. And there is a resident of Riderwood who's also taking the training for, it's an EMT position, I believe. And that would fill the other slot that was looming on the horizon. And there is another individual who will be taking the training in the near future. So ultimately, that is going to be a non-issue for the residents of Vader. And the last point that he wanted me to share was that the residents of Vader currently are paying 12 cents for every $1,000 on their property tax. Levis, I believe, are being, or in the process of being resolved by November 6th in this voting cycle for the other communities of Toledo and Winlock to raise theirs, their per $1,000 fee to 50 cents, which is the maximum allowed apparently in the state of Washington. He knows that in the months ahead, they're going to be visiting the financial needs to maintain the level of services. And he provided a figure that he would probably propose for 2015 in advocating a levy for the residents of Vader and Riderwood. And he gave me a figure that they would shoot for, but I felt uncomfortable in bringing that up inasmuch as the city of Vader has no influence. They don't participate in any levy involving emergency fire services. But what he did suggest that I indicate to the council is that it would be much less than the levies being requested in the other two communities who are neighbors. And so, and he felt, he wanted me to mention that because they are ultra-sensitive to the financial impact that these have on our residents. It sounds like not a lot of money if raised it, if we're paying 12 cents on a thousand, but over time, you understand, but that in their minds is why they were so reluctant to share the monies that they're now conveying. Does that make sense? Because they are concerned about the costs that we pay as residents of Vader and Riderwood. And I commended them for that perception. But what he hopes that the council will take from this report is that you will bear in mind. in mind that they are determined to provide the highest quality of medical coverage, fastest response time that is available and possible for residents of Vader and Ridderwood, and do it at a cost that is ultimately as sensitive as possible to your situation here. And that if and when the day comes when a levy is proposed for our two communities, that the council would look upon the action with understanding and sympathy and perhaps supportive perspective of their efforts. So I believe and I respect Mr. Underdahl, and he's served our community for a couple of decades at least, I'm pretty sure, ably and well. And he was one of the recipients of the plaque that we prevented and presented to them, you'll recall, last year, for which he expressed appreciation to again. So I think we have what I think is a good, working, trustworthy, respectful relationship with Fire District 20 at the moment. There is my report.
Can I comment on that?
Please, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor.
First, Mr. Wilson.
I have an upset.
Okay.
There was four of them standing out here the other day.
Yeah.
And I requested to be a volunteer again, since I was the first one that was only admitted, and they wouldn't accept.
Oh, my. Now, there's some age bias going on. We'll contact our attorney and we'll get on that. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
A long time ago.
Bring a little levity into our council. Appreciate that.
A long time ago.
And we do appreciate all of your service.
I thought that'd be a little funny.
It was. Thank you.
I want to comment on Mr. Underdahl, what some of the process that's been going on. He was, if you remember our last council, two council meetings ago, we had a presentation that said it was a dire need, and they were predicting bad things for us for the ambulance service. And what was going on is our district was withholding their money from the interlocal because they were not divulging how they were spending the money. And I give him a lot of credit because he went under, was under a lot of heat and a lot of pressure. But he held his ground, and he forced them, before we would donate any money to it, or not us, but the, our district, before they would donate the money to the interlocal, he wanted to know how they were going to spend the money, and he wanted an accounting of the money being spent, which was not being done before. They were just spending and not saying, and making accusations about our district. And he went through a lot of heat, so I just want people to know that because I don't think there couldn't have been much more pressure put on that gentleman than there was, and he still stood his ground, and I really respect him for that.
I appreciate that insight, yes, and it was, what I understand, was a pretty emotion-laden board meeting.
Yeah, people stormed out because they weren't getting their way, but it worked for us.
Yes, I think it did ultimately.
Yeah, it was something, when we first started the emergency agency, we had to volunteer, but we had a rough time in those days getting volunteered.
I can imagine.
And I worked nights at that time, and so I could make all the day calls, and then we had people that worked day, and they could make the night calls, and it worked out. Apparently, Beersley, Beersley myself, Mrs. Clevinger.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Ms. Wilson, because I would have been remiss if I didn't remember that you did invite the members of residents of Vader, if you have interest in volunteering, to spread the word amongst your friends, if you think there you know of somebody who might be willing to support the Fire District in emergency service. So thank you. Well, okay, in the interest of time, council doesn't disapprove of it, I would move forward with our agenda. We have another report, I believe, unless there's been a change in that.
Actually, they don't have a report.
Okay, we were anticipating a report from our park board, but we should defer, defer to our next council meeting. Okay, excellent. Then we'll now proceed with public comment.
I'm the owner. Are you the number one? Okay, and yeah. John, so, ooh, I've never done this before.
You come up here, introduce yourself, give everybody a $5. No.
Oh, ten, I thought it was ten.
You have three minutes.
Got it. Hi, my name is Trishanna Jones. I live up on 9th Street. I've been in this community for, since 2006. My kids went to the Vader School before it was torn down, go to Toledo, we serve at our churches and everything. I volunteer within the community for sports in Toledo with many different age brackets and whatnot. And I just want to comment today on the marijuana and how I see that affecting me personally as a resident and my children. I have three children, ages nine, 12, and 17, all girls. And I've already had struggles with my oldest daughter experimenting, and I feel that bringing something like this into the city limits within close proximity to my home is going to adversely affect my home, my children, it's going to make marijuana, whether people say it's less accessible or not, and they're going to have all the bells and whistles and, you know, fences up and security and everything. We already have a drug problem in this community. I was not aware of that when I moved here. I found out shortly thereafter, after I already committed to making this my home. And I do everything possible to keep my children safe. And having drugs within close proximity to my home, because I live on 9th, and we have drug problems up on F Street on a very regular basis. There's numerous people that grow their own stuff here, there's numerous people that have medical cards, yet their children are the ones that are getting access to these drugs and spreading it to other children and other adults. I feel that if the people that want to build this facility, if they want to do it in the county, by all means, out in the middle of the tulips, but close proximity to a community where there's parks, where there is churches, where there are family homes, where the kids could easily walk straight on down, go up the river, because I've done it, and gain access to these facilities, it's going to, I feel, bring more crime to our community because more and more people are going to say, ooh, there's a marijuana plant here. We already have enough crime. I've had numerous things stolen, to include animals off my property recently. We don't need more of that. We need to be vigilant, we need to be more assertive towards this. As for jobs, I really don't feel that it's going to bring jobs, because most of the people in this community are retired, or students, or they have their medical marijuana card. So they're not going to be able to work there anyway, according to the state law. So I feel that it's going to, if it does bring jobs, it's going to bring the wrong sort of people into our community. And I'm not a very prejudiced person, I am actually a very loving and open person to everybody.
Okay, Trishanna, our three minutes have expired.
Okay.
But, all right, to have the council, thank you for your fervent.
Yep.
Your commentary. No others on the public?
That's it.
Okay, let's proceed then with our unfinished business, which, item number one is an update on the private side sewer grant project timeline. And I want to once again lean on our city clerk, who's been, there was a meeting this afternoon that I was not able to attend, unfortunately, but I will begin to try and capture the essence of where we're at with the project. It's my understanding that we cleared most of the hurdles with regard to the relining of the manhole access points in our system, and they're going to begin on Monday, I believe. What's that?
He stopped by my house today, and he said it'll be Tuesday when they start.
Tuesday.
Yeah, that's what he told me.
Okay.
He said, gentlemen, I don't know if he stopped here or not, but he did.
She was in the field today.
They were with the media. Yeah, they're going to be contacting homeowners, and I think in all of this process, bring their equipment in, so you'll finally get to see some scratching in the dirt.
They won't be contacting homeowners.
Well, yeah, but I think in terms of this other project.
Oh, oh, that part of it.
So I'm kind of melding the things. So we've got two projects going on in this funding package. The first is the relining of our manholes where considerable rainwater gushes in whenever there's a drain port. And so they're going to try and seal off of those, there are 52 of them, if I'm not mistaken. And so it's going to be a significant bit of construction going on, but I hope that it doesn't impact our residents too badly, but I hope you also realize that grant money is paying for it, and it's going to help us deal with the inflow of rainwater in our waste treatment sewer system. So ultimately, it'll save us, I hope, a lot of money as we get the rainwater out of our treatment lagoons. And then the other part of the project is, as you recall, the residents of Vader have been asked to, if you meet certain criteria, to submit applications for grant funding, and if you're below a certain income level, this work would begin, in which they'd replace your transite plumbing pipes from the house to the city's main line, main sewer line, if you recall that. And so that timeline has been backed up, because we've so far received 30-plus applications.
Received almost 50 applications so far.
But they've sifted through those, and those that are, have applied to the guidelines were in the 30s.
That's how many they're sure about. There were about 10 or 12 more that they needed more information.
Yeah. So we extended it, there was no definitive guideline, so we've been trying to encourage others, and I, members of the community, have spread the word and attempted to get people to come in and fill out applications for it. But where we're at now is that it's not likely that it's going to begin until late spring, early summer of next year. And we've had.
Actually, not the case either. Sorry.
I am so glad.
December, December, January.
Yeah, in an ideal world, yes.
That's what they said.
Yeah.
I know. I'm just telling you what they said.
Yes, and I, and there's a reason why, because we were planning for late spring, early summer, but as it turns out, after we'd been told that by Gibson Olson, they discovered that the CDBG funding source wouldn't allow that length of extension. So they're, they've moved it up to the earliest possible timeframe, which would be 1st of January, for them. But we'll see how it plays out. And like you say, let's hope that they can do that. Does that make sense?
Is it okay if I add some addition? I'm sorry. I'm the one that gets all the phone calls, I don't always get to get it all to the mayor before the meeting starts.
Exactly.
So the first round of the side sewers, they're hoping to have the contractor signed and ready to go in December, hopefully breaking some ground in January. And then they still plan on doing a second round, depending on how much money, if they're anticipating there will still be grant money available, and since we know we didn't get all of our applicants in that were eligible, they're going to try again. I'm hoping after people see how well the project goes, the first round, that more people will be willing to come in and get their sewer lines replaced for free. So there will be a second round in the spring, at least that's what they're anticipating. And wanted to make mention that if you do not qualify for the LMI grant money, it does not mean that you need to get your side sewer replaced on your own with your own money right now. Don't do anything yet, because there's still plans to try to get more funding. It's just this particular money that we have is only for low-to-moderate income families, so it does not mean that you have to jump in and get yours taken care of if you do not qualify. So just hang in there, and we'll have more steps in the process as next year goes on.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for that.
Get that word out there as much as you can.
Spread the word, although it's fascinating how the word adjusts itself with each telling. And so after the fifth person is heard of, it's just some awful thing, but we're going to engage in some advertising efforts too, to continue to remind the residents, this is something that if you qualify, and we believe you do, that by all means, they must come in and seek after that funding. Do we have a comment from a member of the public? Okay, go ahead.
So it's my understanding on the first telling that they're going to come start digging in December and January? That's what they're shooting for?
Probably.
Everybody's backyard, that's what they're shooting for.
The ones who qualified, the ones who, applications have been submitted.
It's only going to take two backyards dug up in the middle of winter to really impress everybody.
We'll see.
That's government.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the first telling is January, is what they're saying.
You're right. Yes, Ms. Wilson.
I am concerned with several other citizens that approached me, that, I'll use myself an example. I have a perfect sewer line from my house to the city street where it hooks into the city sewer. And they don't want to tell me that I have to take and dig up my sewer line. They're going to have to prove to me that my sewer line is wrong first. Is that correct?
That's correct.
No, no, that is not correct.
If you.
You need to, you need to be careful the way that you look at what, the way the ordinance that you guys passed, the council passed, says if it's older than 20 years, it needs to be replaced. If you believe that your line that's older than 20 years is still okay, then it needs to be tested. The city will provide someone to do the testing. If your older-than-20-year sewer line passes the testing, the city will pay for the test. If it's older than 20 years and it does not pass, you pay for the test, and you've got to get your sewer replaced.
Because mine's over 20 years, it was put in in 1987.
Right. So, so if it's still good, then when we do the testing, we'll pay for the test, if it passes. If it doesn't pass, then the burden goes back onto the homeowner. Is that cleared up? Okay.
We have another question.
Rose Can, when they went and did the scoping, they have records of people that have PVC taps, people that have tile. People that have PVC, regardless of how old they are, they're good. They shouldn't have to test, as long as it's proven it's plastic, shouldn't have to be tested. You're going to turn around and charge me to have my plastic line tested?
I think there's a criteria.
No, that's not what she said.
No.
She is too.
What I said was.
You're telling me I have to prove that my line is okay?
That's partly, that's partly true. You have to have it tested. If it tests good.
Right.
The city pays the bill.
If it doesn't?
Then you pay the bill.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But if it's bad, it has to be fixed.
So I gotta beat the chance, are you digging up out in the street?
It's not a deal.
My house.
No, they don't have to dig anything up, they use your cleanouts. They use your cleanout on your line, which you're supposed to have on your sewer line.
When they go into the sewer tap, they have to have a tap at the sewer tap to charge my sideline. They can't just put some kind of test on my sideline, they got to dig up my tap, put a testing station there, and then if it passes, they can come out.
If you do not have a sewer, if you do not have a cleanout at the house, and you do not have a cleanout where the hookup is.
Nobody has a cleanout at the hookup.
Nobody has a cleanout.
Okay, then, then I guess that's just, you just have to have a cleanup at the house, and then they go into the sewer line and block the city's side of the sewer line.
They put a balloon.
They just have to be able to block, they put a balloon in your cleanout, they put a balloon in the city's end.
I'm a plumbing contractor, I know how you do it, that's why I'm informed.
Well, that's why I'm trying to understand.
But you're telling me, you just told me two minutes ago that I didn't have to dig up my yard, now you're telling me the yard has to be dug up. So what is it?
No, I'm not.
Yes, you did, you said I didn't have to.
Okay.
Okay, we can discuss the particulars another time.
Excuse me, let me intervene here, because we're not going to allow this meeting to turn into an inquisition or cross-examination, but I think you raised valid points. I would add here, if it, just as a matter of information, that if it comes to that point, then, and if you qualified, if you are low-to-moder- then, and if you qualified, if you are a low-to-moderate-income individual, or you will get assistance in that process with this grant funding.
I don't qualify.
Okay, and if you don't qualify, then the city of Vator is going to do what we can to get funding to cover the costs of that. We can't guarantee that it'll happen, but we've been given some pretty definitive assurances that we can come back. So the important thing to take away from this meeting is don't do anything if you don't qualify, but you're concerned that your pipes may not meet the criteria that the engineering company set for us. Don't do anything, because we'll just then begin that process of seeing who doesn't qualify but might have to replace their pipes. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Okay, excellent. So don't panic. We're doing what we can to cover the costs of this entire project, so that it doesn't... But now there may be some who have no option but to improve their system between the house and the main sewer. Yeah, but...
Can I ask one more?
Yeah, we have a question here for this other resident. This council is in charge of the time of this meeting.
We want to keep it moving, so let's ask our question and move on.
Okay, we'll take one question, and if we don't get to you, we invite you to come talk. We'll get to the bottom of it. Okay?
My question is actually, do we, do, you said that they plan on having the contractors lined up in December and potentially starting the project in January. For those of us that have filled out the applications and believe that we qualify, when will we hear something about that?
Good question.
That is a good question, and I don't have a definitive answer on that. There's been a few scheduling changes during this week, and so I know they're continuing to work on the applications, and I can't tell you when they're going to have the definitive.
But I think you'd be safe in saying this, what I was inferring earlier, that you're going to be contacted, those applications qualified, where it's obvious that there needs to be work. You will be, your door will be knocked on.
Okay.
And probably not in the too-distant future, because they have to do a site analysis, identify works app for each project, one project at a time. So, yeah. They're not going to come in like Gestapo stormtroopers with their jackboots on. It's going to be done professionally and sensitively for the residents. At least that's what we hope. Okay? But there, with that, I sense from the council, I know myself, I have the time and strength I'm dealing with tonight, so I would suggest that we move forward. And is that clear enough on a vague timeline, elected official? If it is, then we'll proceed to item number two. Council to consider capital facilities plan. And you should have a document in your possession, capital facilities planning, two-page document. But this is a bill of information, I capture the phrase right, it's something that we're trying to copy what our city attorney does, so that prior to the meeting, you have an idea of just what the subject is, and then you have a suggestion for recommended action on it, and so that we can spend a little less time explaining it in detail, what it is we need to accomplish with. But I could synopsize it. We need to approve a capital facilities plan and include projects that the council has a vision of the community, one of which, of course, is prompting this, is the acquisition of that other half of property adjacent to Warden Park. If it's not included in the capital facilities plan, we can't proceed with that property acquisition. So that and other issues are what is prompting the council action tonight on this. So I think the upshot is that we need to eventually get some council input as to what projects ought to be inserted in. Does that make sense? I hope you've had a chance to read.
I did, and the conclusion of this whole setup was, we have to have a workshop to go through the projects and plan what we're going to do.
Not necessarily.
Well, plan for a workshop to review current CFP and its components.
At a later date.
Right.
What I'm suggesting here, and what the attorney said to suggest, was to, because we're right at the beginning of the 2015 budget season, to set a short timeframe to come up with planned projects just for 2015, just short range, come up with something so we can get our update going and we can get our budget plan for 2015. And then, once that's complete, we can do additional capital facility plan updates and add additional projects to this anytime. So she said, set up a time, plan to have a workshop at a later date to do a larger-scale vision over, for many years to come, not just the immediate one year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's important, because we would just come up with the plan as the vehicle to add upon, but we need to get this land acquisition in it upfront, and we can add to it later. I think that's the essence of what I'm saying.
Right, right.
And so that's what the attorney is recommending that we do tonight. Yes, Mr. Wilson?
I have a question. You've got this thing here.
Yeah.
What happened to all the money that we got off of the trees at the Park Board park? And nothing's been done to it in the last few years when it was supposed to have been done? It was supposed to have been made a park. I'm going back from history where none of you people know.
Yeah.
I'll tell you this right now. Ike was not involved in the city council or mayor or anything at the time, but they logged it off and took all the money.
With all due respect, that actually is a topic that isn't applicable to the capital facilities plan, but, yeah, I could, that was in 2006, I believe, when that took place under the previous administration. But I think that that funding could be accounted for in actuality. So, but inasmuch as it's my responsibility to moderate the discussion, we have to focus on the agenda topic at hand, which is a discussion of the capital facilities planning. So I hope that the council will continue to address the agenda item. We can talk about the funding of that sale later if you'd like to, I would suggest, so...
I guess what we need to know from council is, what's the short-term plan for 2015? And then we need to set up a time at some point to work on a longer-range plan. So in order for us to finish the capital facilities plan update and to effectively create the budget, we need to have an idea of what our plans are for next year.
Okay, well, the purchase of the land we were talking about is 2014, not 2015.
That's correct.
So that would not affect...
I'm saying through 2015.
Yeah, from now until...
Yes.
Okay.
So if you guys want...
Do we need to make a small list?
Well, we need to come up with a list of some kind, and it's just a preliminary list, because it'll take that list and we'll take it to the engineers, and they'll work with it and figure out what approximate costs are going to be, and then that will all come back to council as a capital facilities plan update proposal. And then you guys will look at it and decide if you agree with that, if that's what you want to do. And just because it's in the capital facilities plan doesn't mean it has to happen. It just means you can't do it unless it is in there. So that's, that's kind of the catch there, so...
So do we do that through a motion?
If you guys are ready with the list, I don't know, I didn't anticipate that you would be ready with a list. What we're kind of looking for is a date to have the list by, so that I can take that list and give it to the engineers and get that part of it going.
Why don't we plan on having a list by our next meeting, because we're running out of time?
Yeah.
So we should be able, each one of us come up with a list and have it ready by the next meeting.
Yeah, we could even invite Park Board to...
Yeah, because they're the ones that are going to be doing most of the stuff.
This is the Park Board's list on here. That's what the Park Board came up with as their top projects that they'd like to get done in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
That is the part, and you guys already did the transportation part of it. We already came up with a six-year transportation plan.
Yes.
So that part's taken care of. So it's just this, this kind of capital...
So we don't have the purchase of the park on there, and we don't have the...
Yeah, it's acquisition of additional property.
Some ideas for the...
Stage two.
All right.
Okay.
So you've had most of it done, but you just need to, we need to come up with any other things that we may...
Why don't we put it on the agenda for the next meeting and vote on it?
Okay, well, I don't think it requires a vote at this time. We just need a deadline and a list at the end of that deadline. It doesn't even have to be at a meeting. If you guys want to say now, we'll have a list to you by next Wednesday, great. Then everybody just needs to get their information to me so I can compile it and send it off to the engineer for review.
Done.
So, if you guys get it...
Sensencing consensus of that.
Yeah.
Next Wednesday, enough time to think about, to have a...
Sure. Next Wednesday.
Okay, next Wednesday.
Excellent, thank you. This is a group effort here. Let's make no mistake about it, these capital facilities plans are not easy, they're, we might make it race through it, but we went, we, Jill and our attorney, went through a lot of work to get to this document. They're ready for you until October first. Okay, so let's go to item number three. Council to consider ordinance 2014-18, findings of fact slash public hearing, which relates to the marijuana issue that was mentioned earlier. So we should have the document prepared for you. It's the larger document, and in conjunction with this, a proposed work plan for marijuana zoning.
We'll kind of do the work plan separate.
So I'm hoping that if you've had a chance to review it, you've got a sense as to what the council was asked to do, and that you would dive into that activity.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2014-18 as drafted.
Well, that was quick. It's not usually... Okay. The council, Joe Schei, remember, has submitted a motion for the council to approve ordinance number 2014, as noted, I believe.
I need to read the whole thing.
I need to read it. It's going to suggest that we do that, so...
Okay. The motion, I move to approve ordinance number 2014-18, an ordinance of the city of Vator, Washington, relating to the adoption of findings of fact to support the continued maintenance of an interim zoning ordinance on the acceptance of any applications for development or business licensing for medical or recreational marijuana usage, uses, and confirming the maintenance of the interim zoning ordinance for six months after the initial imposition in ordinance 2014-16 as the effective period, which would be January eleventh.
January eleventh.
Excellent. You've heard that motion submitted by Mr. Schei to the council. Is there a second to that?
Second it?
A second is by Mr. Plante, yes. At this time, it's, I would invite the council to provide any additional commentary or feedback relating to this motion.
I would like to comment.
Yes, please.
At our public hearing, we had a lot of comments, two in four, two for it and against it. There were three people for it. One of them was the peer person putting it in. The other person said that the people voted for it, which was not true. It was the people in Seattle that voted for it, not the people in Vator. And the third person was an individual who wanted medical marijuana for his own use, and this is not a medical marijuana plant, it is a recreational marijuana plant. So the points against it were not as substantial or as accurate as the people were, or those that were for it were not as accurate as those who were against it. They gave accurate points, they gave medical points, and they gave some pretty strong emotional points. And I just feel very good that we're moving ahead in this direction, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you for that. I would probably add here, just for the information of the public with these ordinance, depending on the outcome of the upcoming vote, it contains a synopsis of the comments of each individual who spoke at that public hearing. And so if you're curious as to the content of this, it would be available as a matter of fact. And that represents the finding of fact that emerged from that public hearing. It's kind of unusual, we've not done this that often in the city of Vator, so, and now we're, in previous such public hearings, it's not required to find the effect. So this, but we're adhering once again to the counsel given to us by our city attorney. And so I'm confident that this reflects the commentary of the people who've seen and have their voices heard at that meeting. Now, okay, will there be any other commentary regarding the motion?
Yes. I know that there's pros and cons from the comments, and I know that there's some medical concerns about the use of it, or the need of, for medical purposes. And we're not prohibiting, I mean, if they have that medical need, they can work through the doctor and get that, so, yeah, we're not going to stop that if they need it for medical purposes. And I also heard just a resounding, just heartfelt disconcerns of just a lot of the mothers, citizens of the city, just talking about just the health risk and air quality potentially compromised, unknown impact of allergies, which that affects a lot of people in this town, affects my family, my son, who knows? Who knows the impact of that? I don't know. Nobody does. The negative perception and image to our city, the impact to our streams, somebody mentioned that, to our quality of water in our streams. Families having moved from larger cities with poorer quality to our, our small city because of the clean air and safety that we have to offer. So I just wanted to, I thought those were good notes.
Okay, thank you for that input, feedback. Any other commentary from the council? If not, then we'll put this motion to a vote, as submitted to you by Mr. Schei. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. In conjunction with that, my understanding, based on our attorney's recommendation, is that now the council consider a motion to adopt the brief work plan for marijuana zoning regulations as a part of this ongoing process, and would like to get some council action at this evening, if you are so inclined.
What do you want to get an action on this evening?
Is this?
Approving this work plan set for...
I'll put a motion on the table right now to approve this work plan, so we move this process forward.
Okay.
A proposed motion for the work plan for marijuana zoning regulations, item one through six.
Okay, Mr. Plante submitted a motion to approve or adopt this as the Vator City Council work plan, items one through six, as articulated on this document.
I second that.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Wilson. With that, is there input, feedback? I would note that, you noted item three, is that you would, in this work plan, you'd have a SEPA or environmental review done on the ordinance, which is required, of course, that Rob White is our, our planning officer for the city, is our SEPA director, so he's the one that would do that, in case you're wondering who would be responsible for that, because that's complicated.
I just feel as soon as we move to get to the process, I don't want to, I don't want to be looked at as indecisive or wimpy on this item. I want people to understand there's a, there's a collective effort to do things properly, but that we have given many signals, and we don't want it in town. And I don't want to, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Milton to give, hang a carrot in front of him. You know, I, I think we should say, this is it, bingo, we're done. We want his business here as a German auto, but we don't want the drugs. And that's my personal feeling.
Okay. Well, this would effectively set a motion official plan, which apparently is a requisite for the course of action that the council is engaging in. We do have an individual in the audience who would like to write a comment. Council defer to that.
Sure.
I just have a quick question. I'm probably confused, but if you're going to do any zoning or, for zoning ordinance, doesn't this have to go through the planning committee?
That's one of the steps in this that they're adopting. That's one of the steps in this that they're adopting. I don't think you've got a copy, so.
Well, they are, obviously, available, I don't know if anybody has one.
Yeah, that will articulate the steps that will now proceed based on what is just taking place regarding resolution 2014-18.
It's a six-step plan, I'll read it to you quickly, so you're aware. It's the work plan for marijuana zoning regulations. Step one, draft an ordinance regulating medical or recreational marijuana businesses. Two, send the draft to the Department of Commerce for GMA Growth Management Act review. This is required for any zoning changes or updates. Step three, have the SEPA environmental review done on the ordinance, which is also required. Step four, schedule a public hearing before the planning committee, required before the passage of the ordinance. And step five, have a planning committee provide a recommendation to the council. Step six, schedule the ordinance for consideration by the council.
You walk away from this document, you'll know what will be happening in the future, and where we're going to be implementing this within the next six-month window that we've just cleared, so. And by doing this, we're ensuring that we're on the most solid legal ground that would ensure that any effort to dispute this in court would be met with the utmost confidence in legal opposition, that sentence makes sense. So, there you have it. Any other feedback from the council regarding this before we put this motion to a vote? Hearing then, with regard to the motion set forth, is Mr. Flynn, you submitted the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Excellent, signs of action, well done, council. So, now, let's proceed with a council to consider hiring a hearings examiner. Perhaps I could set the stage, you have the next little agenda of it for information, or it's bill of information.
Agenda bill.
It's an agenda bill. It's a new term that we're trying to utilize in this agenda bill format, which is standard operating procedure in most big cities where high-paid administrative, so that you can study the issue beforehand and then know, have an opinion set for action that facilitates the city council meetings. We're going to need to have a hearings examiner, we're going to proceed forward with the ordinance that we have in place regarding abandoned buildings and other nuisance items. And so, we need to set a motion of the identification and hiring of such an individual. And once we've got that, then there is nothing that I'm aware of that would prevent us from finally, with all of our legal ducks in a row, going after landlords who are creating health hazards and blight within the city of Vader. So, for me, this is an important step forward with the city council. So, I would turn the conversation over to the council for, we have considered action.
Can I have additional comment? You know me, I can hear this, it can't be quiet. If you notice on the back page of the agenda bill where it gives the recommendation, there is a list of four recommended or suggested, I guess in better words, suggested areas of authority for the hearings examiner. The land use permitting, that is relating directly to anything to do with land uses, whether it's an appeal involved or where there's some kind of a hearing that needs to happen, and that includes this abandoned home, abandoned derelict building process. Business license appeals, that's something that a lot of other cities use their hearing examiner for. We don't really have that process set up, but if the council's interested, we can include that, or we can leave it out, it's up to you. Code enforcement appeal, decision maker, I think that one's kind of important to have because all of our other codes relate, like our other nuisance ordinances and things like that, have to have an appeal process, and that, the way ours are all written is with a hearing examiner. And so, it kind of makes sense to have that for sure, I would think, in, in the recommendation. And then civil forfeiture hearings, that was recommended by the attorney, and that has to do with any property that's forfeited as a seizure by, like, the police department, and people want to try and get their property back after it's been seized for whatever reason. It has to go through an appeal process, and generally, it's recommended to have a hearing examiner do that. And I think I put in here the information that a hearing examiner is often an attorney, so they will be up on all these laws, and will have someone with a lot of knowledge and understanding being able to make these decisions for us.
And we would, with, depending on your action tonight, we would advertise with the criteria that you've got in this document.
And any of these things can be left out, and she said, the attorney also informs that as, as we continue to go on through all of our ordinances and update things, we can add additional responsibilities to the hearing examiner if we want to do that at a further date. But in order to get this, like you said, the derelict home thing and the nuisance codes going, we have to have a hearing examiner, so it's something, I believe, to be the last blockade in front of us getting this done.
It's taken us two years to get to this point.
Yeah, I know.
We don't think about that. We do have one, a comment from a member of the public, council sensitive.
If the city already has an attorney that is working with you, then why do they need a second attorney to act as a hearings-
Conflict of interest, and it's just a division, separation of responsibilities. You can't have a city attorney serving as a hearing examiner if there's a dispute in the process.
Because our attorney is, takes the city's side and defends the city, and so, in an appeal, it's going to be what the city wants versus the homeowner, and it wouldn't make sense for our-
So, this is supposed to be an impartial person-
Right.
Exactly. Acting on behalf of both the homeowner or the property owner and the city?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can answer that, we've given the constraints, I am just so sensitive.
I know that.
Yeah, we could provide all of this background information another time if you'd like. Just come to City Hall and just inquire, we've got all this for you. Council entertain one more comment from the public.
The hourly, weekly, monthly, yearly?
Contract, per, per situation. So, it would just be as needed. The council action, is there any other comment from the council?
Do you need, it says on here, council will need to decide how much money to budget for the hearings examiner.
Yes, and we don't know what that's going to look like yet. We can, we can talk about that at a later date if we can get this started, the process started, so that we can get-
So, we need a motion, we need a motion to look for.
Yep, there you motion right there. And then you got to tell us what things you want the hearing examiner to do at this point.
Well, I'm tired of wasting time, so I say I'm going to put a motion on the floor right now. I move that we assign city staff to prepare an ordinance that creates the position of hearing examiner and assigns roles and responsibilities to hearing examiner in the following areas. And I think all these, oh, land use permitting, business license appeals, code enforcement appeals, decision maker, and civil forfeiture hearings.
Excellent. You've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Flynn, as stated, but do we have a second?
A second then.
Seconded by Mr. Schei. Last chance, if you guys can do this, any concerns, aggravation, comments? Hearing then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, to me, this is small, but an extra little step towards progress in our community. Item number one under two business, council, council to consider purchase of coal patch for pothole repairs. So, I think that you've got a document that explains the need there. Volume of purchase cuts the price, and we need it. We've got potholes that are temporarily need to be addressed. So, I'm suggesting that the council approve this acquisition in the amount of, what was the total? Nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Yes, Mr.-
I have nothing against it, but do we have the proper equipment, such as a vibrator and dig it out and put the, the heat around it and put, or not?
We don't have the, the device, the-
Vibrator.
Yeah, although there's a word for it, it's not the pan, what?
Tamper.
The tamper device.
Compactor.
That's a comp, but if it's necessary, we could acquire it, we could rent it.
Well, I would like to see the coal patch rather than the concrete.
Me too.
But want to make sure we have the proper equipment to do it with.
I can assure you that-
It'll last a lot.
Yes, well, even at best, we all know the coal patch is not the solution for, it's the superior solution. This is a stopgap measure, it's usually good for a year or two, so.
It's better than dumping gravel and all.
Exactly, gravel and cement, cement works, but it's unsightly. So, and our new public works employee is ready, and he's trained, he knows the processes involved to make it last as long as you possibly can.
I wouldn't have nothing against it, except make sure we have the proper equipment, so.
You don't need a motion for that, do you?
Well, I think we do.
There's a motion down there, read it.
Okay, if you'd like to read the motion.
Trying to make it easy.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of fifty-six bags of coal patch product of street repair and maintenance, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute the purchase order. And that's PW091814.
Thank you. We've got a motion submitted by Mr. Olsen to approve the acquisition as stipulated of coal patch. We have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Olsen. Any additional commentary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried, thank you, I think you will be seeing that impact. And now, we're, we proceed with the last item, which was added by Mr. Flynn, council action on communication equipment. We just learned of this, it's from Lewis County, Mike Strozak, who was over the 911 department in Lewis County, has gotten his hands on forty-five hundred dollars, and he'd like to distribute that amongst smaller communities. We don't get forty-five hundred, we'd get enough to purchase an item of communication equipment, which he explained, not to me, but to our city clerk. So, would you mind specifying what exactly it was that he's suggesting we acquire if we want?
He's suggesting our concern when we saw this, this money was available, it's for communication equipment only, generally directed towards emergency situations, and I explained that we have no way to contact our public works employee if he's out of, out of the office, whether it's an emergency or not an emergency, because cell phone coverage is so spotty. If he goes down to the sewer plant, he doesn't have any coverage. So, they said, he had put me in touch with his communication expert, and he discussed our situation, found out how big our area is, all that, and he gave us a really approximate description and cost price, a price list of what it would take to have a radio unit here in the city. You set a particular frequency, we require an antenna on the building, and then our public works employee would have a handset, handheld device that we can contact him anywhere in the city.
Super.
And he can contact us anywhere in the city if he were to, all down a hole or something. He can get help as well. And the total of that is about twelve hundred dollars. And what we're looking for tonight from council is just approval for us to request, apply for the grant for this type of equipment.
Yeah, can I agree with that, if I can clarify?
Certainly.
So, I would invite the council, okay, would you like to make that form of motion?
I put a motion that we approve going after the funds for communications for the city to keep track of and, and to communicate with the field worker.
Perfect, okay, I've heard the motion is submitted by Mr. Flynn, to that end, do we have a second?
I second.
Mr. Olsen, he seconds it. Additional comment from the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have one, Mr. Schei.
But we have to vote, any opposed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
None, okay. Now, you have a comment.
I have had several people come to me wanting Eighth Street from Mr. Flynn to be done and cleaned up. When I left office, I had it cleaned from fence line to fence line. That's been a few years ago. And they're complaining because two cars can't pass anymore. And I think all these people that go down Eighth Street, Eighth Street is an emergency for us in case of five oh six.
Really noted, yes, and although it's not on the agenda, we've actually discussed that, and our new public works employee is beginning to clear, we just acquired a hedge trimmer that's designed to cut blackberries, brambles, and so he's going to begin to use that along Eighth Street.
He's got the, he's got the south side of Eighth Street from I Street to West Side Highway done.
Yes.
And I got a comment, I'll compliment him too, when he does do it, he cleans up his mess and hauls it away right away. Doing a nice job.
So, thank you for that.
I just wanted to bring the issue up because people, I can't, I tell them, I said, I have no authority for it, and because now we've got, we've got trees like this since 2004.
It's not lost on us, and we're, we're, I think you'll see, we'll be-